I'm supposed to use this.
There you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. I was about to say good morning. I have it. So, good afternoon, Converse, comments, board chair, I would ask all of you to keep Mr. Foster and one of his dear family friends in your prayers. His dear friend lost his 15-year-old son.
Oh, man.
This Sunday in a boating accident.
That too.
So that is why, I'm guessing, he is not here, but if we could all keep those two families in our prayers. I can't imagine, I'll cry anyway. Board members. Mr. Stone, say, which comments?
No comments.
Mr. Gibbons. Public comment. I saw the head shake, just for the record. I didn't just. Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. We are, this meeting is just limited to getting our ducks in a row for our presidential search. The first item that I put on, or Deborah and I put on, was selection of the search firm. We have, within your packets, four folks that sent us proposals. I will tell you that I personally reached out to the chair from last, when we did our last search.
Oh.
And I will tell you that there wasn't, there hasn't been really anyone I've communicated with who did not think that Dr. Jeff Hakaday was fabulous the last time.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we select Hakaday and Associates as our search firm for this process moving forward.
I have a motion. I have no other board members to look to other than.
Having read through everything, and also talking to a few people myself, I'll give a second.
Thank you.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Deborah, I don't know what the process is, whether I communicate with Dr. Hakaday or whether you do. Yeah, we'll talk. Well, okay, we will work that out. Moving on to.
I do have a question, Madam Chair. The last time, Mr. Brett was the primary contact for Dr. Hakaday in the process for the board. And that was the person that, when we moved through the process day to day, he would also give the report to the board via email, through the president's office at the time, or at an actual board meeting. So, is that how we're, the question is, I guess.
The way.
Is there a way to set this up?
What's the process?
Exactly.
Okay. The way I envisioned this was that, now that we've selected Dr. Hakaday, if you look down to D and E, D and E are the composition of our search committee and also putting it together. The way I envisioned this was that Dr. Hakaday would work with the chair of that search committee.
Mr. Brett was the chair of the search committee as chairman. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. When we get there, I actually had the opportunity to speak with him, and I have, you see, you're making me go faster.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Slow down, I'll slow down.
I have order here.
Yes, ma'am, I'll go through order.
The answer is yes.
Brian Miles put me up today, so I'm just kidding.
All right, so, D and E we'll get to after B.
Yeah.
So, review president's job description, that is in our, that is in your booklet. I also have some handouts that were created at the time. These are just some other candidate attributes. I also have the advertisement from 2009.
That tells me that.
Thank you, Doctor.
And.
Is that, you're saying it's in here in our packet?
If you look after all the, after the four proposals.
Yes, ma'am.
It's 3B, but we don't have a tab, so it's just, you kind of have to search.
Okay.
Has included with the package was, in essence, was basically the president's job description, essential duties and responsibilities. Deborah was kind enough to also give me what, some other things that were listed. Are you?
Yeah, I don't have that in my packet. I'm in the back, and I have D and, that's back to the search.
You're correct. You're missing one.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Hold on.
That. Thank you. Sorry about that.
This, this just kind of gave us two other options. I will tell you, I've read all three. I think frankly, they overlap, I think considerably, probably about 85, 90%. I don't know what you, I don't know that we need to go line by line if everybody's taking a look at it. The only proposals that I have is that in the job description that is within our package, I would like to clarify that a doctorate degree includes a Juris Doctorate. Having one myself, I'm thinking they actually count as one. I appreciate that all the academics in the room do not agree with me, but.
I would agree with that, Madam Chair. We can laugh about it. I would agree with that.
I'm sorry. But the only request I would have would be that, within the document that we have in our, in our backup, that we include, it says doctorate degree, and I would put comma, including Juris Doctorate.
No, I'm listening, sorry.
Comments, questions, disagreement?
Yeah.
I'm open.
As I was reading through and reviewing this last week, the only thing I didn't see, and perhaps I just missed it, I think it's important to stress the importance, the president's going to have his or her role bringing all the campuses together and being on the same page. That's a very difficult thing to do, and I think it's somewhat unique to St. Pete College. I know Dr. Law has taken great strides in going in that direction. We realize each campus is different, and they have.
And their communities are different.
And the communities they're in are different, but the leader needs to be someone who can unify those campuses and make sure we're all St. Pete College. Other than that.
I would agree with Mr. Stone's assessment on that, Madam Chair. The only other thing that I would add is, there was some ambiguity or vagueness when we were in the last process, and it worked out fine, as you can very well see, when we talked about accreditation having been a part of an accreditation process. And it should, I think it should specifically speak to college or university accreditation processes, because there's accreditation across the board for just about anything that you do, but it was not as specific when it was speaking to the accreditation portion. And I want to make sure that the individuals that we get to in terms of finalists and other things, or even look at their, the applicants, that is, is very qualified in terms of, because that's, that's the most important thing that a college president does, is making sure we're accredited. We, so we want to make sure that it specifically speaks to the accreditation of colleges or universities.
Okay. I'm trying to see where we would add that. I don't see, you're right, I don't see.
Yeah.
But I did think I saw.
There's one on the printed sheet, Madam Chair.
It was on the printed sheet.
Thorough understanding of higher education accreditation and academic programs.
And see, that could be, when you say higher ed, that could be fire, that could be police, that could be, that could be a myriad of things.
So you would prefer it say?
I would prefer it be very specific to our task, and our task is college and university.
Regional accreditation.
Regional accreditation.
College and university, regional accreditation. All right.
Because agencies, as you well know, Madam Chair, has to be, have to be accredited. I mean, you have all these other accreditation groups that accredit these for-profit colleges and all that stuff. Not that we don't want those folks to apply, but, but the thing is, I want to make sure that they can do this specific task.
Understood. One of the other, so what I would suggest is, is this material, the job description, the previous ad, will go to Dr. Hakaday. I am going to ask that on the, when we send him the ad, are we in agreement that it should read, so it's the second bullet under candidate attributes, thorough understanding of regional accredited college and university accreditation, or college and university accreditation and academic programs? Is that, are we in agreement?
Perfect.
That's what we're changing that to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Second is, going on your point, adding something to the job description to the effect of recognizing and respecting each campus's unique qualities while.
Campus and communities.
Campus and communities.
Because Tarpon is so different from St. Pete, and Seminole is so different from Tarpon, and so on and so on.
Each college and county's unique qualities while, help me with the last part, while ensuring a unified St. Pete College, something to that effect. Deborah, I'm going to need some wordsmithing. Is that, did I capture what your intent was or no?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. If you want to wordsmith, can you get with Deborah?
Yep.
Okay. We have, if you look at our last ad, our last ad asked for five years of experience, and our job description has 10 years.
Wait, where's that? We asked for five years of what experience?
So.
I read this last.
On the ad, go to the very bottom where it says experience, okay. It said five, and then in what we've got in the job description, which is kind of an updated one from last time, we asked for 10. So somewhere in this process, or in the process last time, that must have changed. Do we have a board, do we want to leave it at five?
You know, my preference would be to leave it at five, as we had during the last search. I feel like this may open, allow for more potential applicants that can be sorted through and perhaps see someone that we wouldn't have before. Deborah, what do you think?
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, are we, I'm fine with that, yeah.
I'm fine with that. My theory is, is that I would like this, that our criteria to be specific as to what we want, but as open as we can get. I am confident that we are going to have a search committee that is, and Dr. Hakaday, we are just going to be able to sort, right, sort this down. But I wouldn't want, my fear would be losing the one candidate because of a year or two. I mean, that, that to me is, is what I would be afraid of doing.
I'm okay with that. I, my question for the board, of the board members though, is, do we define high-level, successful leadership?
I don't know you can. I can tell you that for two weeks now, I have spent more of my free time trying to wordsmith. As a good lawyer, I can't touch a document without changing it. And at the end of the day, I think selecting a president is as much about someone's qualifications as it is about their personality and do they fit in. And just because we may define something as successful, someone on paper may be highly successful, but they simply may not be the right fit for us. So my, again, I go back to, leave it as broad as we can, and at the end of the day, let this sort out.
I'm fine with that. I guess my question is more towards, do we define the level that people can be at to apply? For my example is, Madam Chair, is at Broward, as Dr. Law will tell you, they have campus presidents. That doesn't necessarily mean that you're ready to be a president. It's like our provosts.
I got you.
And so, you would, this would allow for them to essentially apply to be a president, to skip some steps that they.
Well, we applied, but we're also smart enough to do this.
All right, okay.
I don't know that that's going to, that's going to get past us, I guess is what I'm saying.
No, point well taken, all right.
Because then the problem, where I see, because I have, I have ruled this for two weeks. My problem is, is then what words do we use? Because if we define a word as a certain, a certain way, and somebody else defines a word another way, and all these different posts have all these different responsibilities, I think at the end of the day, they can call themselves whatever they want, and we're still going to take a look at what they've accomplished, what, you know, what they've done, and do they fit.
So, what we're, what we are proposing right now, since there's no, this is an information item, what we're proposing is to get these changes to Dr. Hakaday, and he will then include them, or get a packet back to us so that we can review before it goes out, so that we can essentially say, this is what we want to go out. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I would, I would ask for your all's, before we have a, I'm hoping that we will have a committee, more or less, before we leave today.
Sure.
So what I'm hoping is that, that chair of that committee will have, will be tasked with working with Dr. Hakaday based on our comments from today, in finalizing the ad and finalizing the descriptions.
I will tell you though, I'd, I'd like to make sure that Dr. Hakaday runs the process, because I've talked to some folks, I guess he has associates now, and they're just not as savvy as.
Okay.
From what I've heard. So if he would agree to that, I would like for him to be the person that runs this search. I know that he is seven years older, but.
I got you.
We really would like him to facilitate this process.
Personally.
Will you agree with that, Dr. Law?
Oh, yeah.
He did a great job the last time.
I think he wants to do this.
Okay.
I spoke with him personally, and I did not get any impression that he would.
I just wanted to make sure, because there's been some colleges that were, they're happy with it, that they felt like he was much more seasoned and had a little more.
I didn't get the impression that anyone other than Dr. Hakaday would be working with us.
All right, I will reaffirm that.
But I'm glad that, I need to ask that question. Thank you. I think we have, we have beaten up on job description.
Yep.
Anyone else, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Establish a liaison team. If you go to C3, in 2009, 2010, there was a group of four that were the liaison team that helped, it supported both the chair of the search committee, in addition to supporting Dr. Hakaday, with, you know, kind of setting up meetings, setting up tours, things like that, getting calendars together. My proposal would be to essentially follow the same, follow the same pattern. Amelia Carey, Desiree Warner.
Warner.
Warner, thank you. Rita Farlow and Rebecca and/or Deborah. Any, any other comments, questions, concerns, or additions?
We're going to have Amelia again, just fine.
And I will tell you, Dr. Hakaday asked if she was going to participate specifically. So, with that said.
Just make, I'll just make you three people. Deb, Deborah and Rebecca, they have so much to do with Dr. Law. I mean, if you have three people or two people, that should be enough. I mean, they're only going to be designated to doing this. It's going to be their number one priority, right, Dr. Law?
I should think so.
Yeah.
Let, let me say this. I, I do a majority of my communication with Deborah and Rebecca. I would feel like my arm was cut off if you took them away from this process. So, if you would just indulge me, okay. I'm grateful.
Yes, ma'am.
That said, do I have a comment, question, concern, or a motion to accept those four?
How are we going to decide between Rebecca or Deborah? Do you want, do you want us to come up with that now, or are you going to?
I think she's saying or.
I'm saying or.
Right.
Just both.
Both.
Okay. And/or, okay, got it.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I also moved that we have a liaison committee of the four folks that you provided, Amelia Carey, Deborah Warner, Rebecca, and Deborah Boyle.
Thank you.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did I get it?
Yes. Aye.
Your name was.
I'm sorry. I was trying to be up on the next point.
Okay. Composition and, composition of the search and screen committee. 2000, 2009, 2010, they, the board consisted of two of our own members, two faculty members, including the president of the FGO, college administrator, college support staff member, two students, a representative of the foundation, and then each board of BOT member selected a member of the public.
Yeah, I remember that. I'm going to tell you though, Madam Chair, I thought it was too big. It was, it was far too big. It was, I mean, you may want to ask Tom Furlong what he thought, but it was, I mean, it was a nightmare trying to deal with all those people, and every time you turned around, I mean, it was like 20-something people.
Well, I can tell you, the feedback I got was that because the meetings, there were so many meetings, that having the volume that you all did made it so that there was sufficient amounts of folks to participate. That was the feedback I got, because I, I'm a less is more kind of girl, you know that.
Yeah, I'm telling you, it was out of control. It was too much. I just, I'm telling you, it was, it was a lot to deal with. I would almost move to each board member selecting two people from their, from their community, and cutting it down a little bit, you know.
So help me understand, where would you, where would you make the cuts? So that I?
Is that in our packet? I, so we had it right here.
Are you thinking nine people, Deborah?
Yeah, I mean, nine is enough. I got it, I think, I think I had it. Yes, I do this right here. Yeah, I'm, I mean, 17 people, that's a lot. And I.
It wasn't 17, though. It was, the past was 13, and then I was going to propose adding an additional faculty member. So we would be up to 13, or 14, I'm sorry. There was 13 in the past.
No, I have seven, I have seven, oh, possibilities. I'm looking at the wrong sheet.
Those are, those were just names that I, that I kind of kicked around, if you go to.
It was 13, all right.
So there were 13 last time. My proposal would be that we add one more faculty member.
How many faculty members do we have on it now? On the, on the proposal, two?
As it, as it stood in 2009, it was two faculty members and, was it two faculty members and the FGO president?
Yeah.
So it was three. So I would propose adding one more.
One more faculty person?
One, two, three.
If you have.
No, I think it was a total of three last time.
So you're saying put four faculty?
It was, it's a, it's a proposal. I can.
I'm asking. You're saying move to four people from the faculty.
Yes. From three to four. So we had three last time.
I'm a little nervous about that, I have to tell you, with what's going on with our faculty.
Well, and I kind of take it the other way. I take it the other way and say this is an open process, and these are folks that are going to have to work with this person. And I kind of feel like, you know, if, if they are selected by the FGO president, or the FGO in general, you know, they, I understand your concerns. I don't know, I think you got a lot of votes there.
I mean, they're represented by the FGO, so Dr. Mercadante would be on the process, in the process. And then you have two other folks. I really don't want to expand it.
So you, okay, so you're saying total of three. Okay. Any thoughts?
I don't have any issue with adding a faculty member. I do have a numbers issue, similar to Deborah's, that it becomes, you know, once you get up to a certain size, it becomes too big. I would do 13 or less people. I wouldn't have an issue with nine or 11, but.
Me too. 11, that'd be great.
Where would you, so as it stands right now, we have two, two board of trustees members. I would not serve, because I'm chair of this board. So it would be two BOT, three faculty, two students, one college administrator, one college support staff, one foundation rep, and that puts us at seven, eight, nine, 10, and I must have missed somebody. So, oh, and then I left out the one person for each, the four of us.
And that would make it what?
So times four.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, yes, thank you. Where do you all want? I'm, I'm listening. I'm, I'm open, but at the same time, it's important to me, I, I think that I want this process to be as open as it can be, and I want folks to feel like they've, you know, this is a big decision that we're going to live with for a long time.
Is there any way to, instead of all four board of trustees members picking one person each, as that's how it worked in the past, correct?
I wasn't here.
Deborah?
That's based on all the notes I've read.
Yes, yeah, 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 that's what happened, yes.
Is there a way for the board of trustees to come up with two that they all agree on, or is that asking for too much?
I, I don't object to that. With that said, Mr. Foster isn't here to speak for himself. I know, I can tell you, and I think I handed out some possibilities that I've kicked around.
Well.
I, I could live with it, but.
Well, I mean, you got, how about the, you're saying that each board member would pick one, right? So why don't each, why, if all board members come up with three? Like, I would propose Ken Burke, Bob Fine, Bill McLeod. Two former chairs of the board, and also the person that's been the past chair of our foundation.
Hold tight, you lost me for a second. You're talking about for the board itself.
For the board only selecting the three.
Only coming up with 13. So then we go down to 13, so we stay at 13.
And with those folks.
And your, your choices were?
Ken Burke, Bob Fine, and Bill McLeod from your list of possibilities.
I, got it.
I don't have that.
Oh, here.
Sorry. I got, no, I've got one.
Oh, okay.
I've got one, but I don't remember any two of those ones. I hadn't handed them out yet, I'm sorry. I will tell you all that I have reached out to Terry Brett, who was the chair at the time that this, the last search process occurred, and I had asked if you all had approved, would he consider being the chair of our search committee?
So move.
So we may, I, I can tell you that he has, he was.
That's why he was acting funny at dinner, huh? He wouldn't even talk to me. I was sitting there for like an hour, he didn't say a word.
But I have had the opportunity to talk to him about what the process was, and how he handled it, and what he learned, and he was gracious to spend a lot of time on the phone with me and giving me good guidance. And at the end of the day, as I kind of kicked around names and who and how, I couldn't think of anybody else better to lead the process.
Madam Chair, I would definitely agree with that. It would also give us folks that were on this committee, that care about this college and this community, and that, that's what we really need on here, people that have a passion for St. Petersburg College, and we know every one of those folks, especially Mr. Brett, has a passion for St. Petersburg College and to serve with distinction, so.
So.
If I can make a motion, I'll, I would make a motion that we keep the committee at 13.
Okay.
With the board selecting three people, and the three people that I propose, if Mr. Stone cipher has something different, we can talk about it. I'm just doing this motion so that we can have discussion. So I propose Ken Burke, Bob Fine, and Bill McLeod as the board's selection to the committee. And then also, in my motion, I'd like to add that we, that we, the board, select Mr. Brett as the chair of the committee.
Well, then you're back up to 14.
No.
Then we, you essentially proposed four.
No.
From the board of trustees.
No, no, three, and then the chair. So he would serve as one of the people on the committee.
That would bring us up to 14.
Oh, crap.
I.
Let's just leave it that way, and is 14 fine, Nathan, I mean?
Do we need an odd number, or is that not, is it?
I just think you need a majority, so it doesn't matter if we have an odd number. That's what it came down to before. We ended up having a majority vote.
I'm okay with 14.
All right.
Okay, so we're okay with 14.
I need a second on the motion, though, to have discussion.
Hold tight, hold tight. I got to restate your motion, because I got to make sure I understand it. So, your motion is that the, that we are okay with 14, the total amount is going to be 14.
Yes.
That the four, which then brings the four proposed by the board of trustees are Terry Brett to act as chair, Ken Burke, Bob Fine, and Bill McLeod.
Yes.
So, having that motion on the table, do I have a second?
I'll second, and then the discussion as well. Is, I know you spoke to Mayor Foster before the meeting. Is, is the final selection of this committee something that?
I have not, just for the record, I have not spoken to Mayor Foster. I have not spoken to him.
Understood. Is, is the final selection of this committee, I don't want to delay this at all.
Me either.
I just. I just, uh, wonder if Mayor Foster's input, um, would be worthwhile moving forward.
We can, um...
If he has any, if he has any, if we ma- make this motion and move it forward today, if he has any angst or wants to change something, I have no problem at our next meeting coming back and changing those, you know, if he has somebody other than these three or four people.
Um, Suzanne, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Do we have rules for rehearing? If we were to, if we were to come back and somebody were to make a motion to open this, to re, to, to open up this motion and modify it potentially, are, are there rules within that we can? We can be flexible?
We can vote at another meeting to confirm a decision of the board.
Okay.
I agree. I think you're right, Mrs. Stonecifer. We need to give him an opportunity to review it and then give feedback. I mean, that's fair. He's a, a member of the board as well, so...
It's an important decision.
No, I agree. Definitely.
Then why don't we do this? Why don't we do this as a tentative? Why don't we do this as a tentative? And we've got another meeting, although we, we're gonna, if our next meeting is proposed to be set in January, um, we're gonna lose thirty days.
So why don't we send it to him, have him give the feedback to, um, council? And then from that point, Madam Chair, you can, you can call a meeting and we can do it over the phone.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we get it done, vote, vote on it, give it, and I don't, I think that's what you just said.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. He has the opportunity to change.
Okay. So the motion, the motion that is proposed, and I'm gonna restate it again just so that we're, we're clear, is that the total search committee will be fourteen. The Board of Trustees, um, are, instead of selecting individuals, we have, as a group, selected Terry Brett to act as our chair, Ken Burke, um, Bob Fine, and Bill McLeod, with the understanding that we are going to allow, uh, Mayor Foster to review this. And, um, none, none of the three of us are objecting to reconsidering this at our next meeting in the event that he has other, other thoughts and ideas. So, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Having a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Um, the only other things that we do need to look at on this is, um, we now need to kind of think through some of the other people on here. As to, previously they had two Board of Trustees members sitting on this. And I've got two sitting in front of me. But I don't.
This is gonna take a lot of time. Well, Bill Foster's not here. Just put him on.
I, I'd be more than happy, uh, to serve if the board would allow.
I would serve as well.
Okay, then, um, and with that said, I will, let's kind of go through the list. So Nathan and Devron. Um, we are at three faculty that will be, uh, I'm sorry, we've got the two faculty, including the president of the FGO. My proposal would be that we let the FGO make that determination.
Um, that's... I'm at a loss on that one. I don't know how, Dr. Mercadante, do you remember how we got to that before? Was that the way we did it before? Is that, I, I can't remember, it was so long ago.
I'm not sure the FGO actually chose the faculty members other than the FGO's senate president. Do you want us to think that we remember how these people got on there?
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we check that? If that was the, if that was the way we got to it before? I just want to be fair. I don't wanna, I don't, you know, I don't know how that we did that before, to be very honest with you. I don't remember.
Let me look over to my memory. I believe, do you remember the people applied through the survey? And then they were selected from that?
And who selected them? Is that, that was the, that's the question really, though. Who, who ended up selecting the, the, uh, the faculty persons? Because then it was Earl, right? Earl Freitas was the FGO, um, person that... So did Earl select them or who selected them?
I don't think we, I don't think we know.
Oh, okay.
Your thoughts on any of this?
I, I mean, I think the application process works. We just, um, we need to find the, the most reasonable way to sort through those and then select from there.
Here's my concern with an application process. If we do an application process, we are going to lose the thirty days that we just tried to save.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to have somebody in place by, you know, late April, early May, so Dr. Law has some time with them. This is, this is not, you know, I hate, I mean, I don't want to say a name, but this is not one of these rural community colleges out and, you know, this is a big place with a big budget, a lot of people, um, and, um, a lot of things. I mean, I think Mrs. Stonecifer said it best upfront, you know? You know, each community, each campus has its own flavor. They're doing certain things. Uh, we're at workforce programs, all these things that, that matter. Um, in, in terms of folks getting jobs and being productive parts of this community and workforce. So I'd like to have somebody in place that spends some time with, you know, his resource of knowledge before he leaves to go, uh, take care of his grandkids, so. So I think you're right, the thirty days is, is vital, um, to the process. But I do want to be fair to the faculty and allow them to, um, because I don't, I don't think that, that the board, the board should be involved in picking the faculty who, who's on, who are on this committee.
Let me, let me just throw this out there. So if, if we pick the two students, if we pick the representative of the college administrator, if we pick the staff member and we pick the students, well, students, we've already picked a foundation rep. So that would leave the only two members that we didn't pick would be the two faculty members of a fourteen board. Um, and we would leave that in the hands of the FGO. Um, I, I just want to throw it, I mean, I get it. I'm, admittedly, I'm pushing this process hard. So at any time, somebody can kind of pull back the reins on me and say, you know, slow your roll.
We're going, we're going to fourteen, right?
We're going to fourteen.
So Amelia says the administrators and the other folks submitted applications, so that's how that happened.
Okay.
Look at Tanja, she was on the, on the committee.
I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, she did.
I did. She said I did.
They did submit applications, both the administrator and the staff person submitted applications. They applied.
I, I'm gonna tell you something. I, I want to be fair, um, Madam Chair. And I, I want to make sure, eh, 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 the board ultimately has to make the final decision. But we do want buy-in from the community and we do want buy-in from this, from this faculty. And, um, if we select them, I don't think that's gonna be fair, to be honest with you. That would mean we've handpicked just about everybody that'd be on this process. And no matter how much we say, oh, we didn't do this or we didn't do that, some individuals are gonna feel like that we're being a little heavy-handed. So, um, I would propose, and I'm open to discussion because I, I'm at a lack here of what we should be doing in terms of moving forward, that you let the FGO, um, Dr. Mercadante pick the two staff, I mean, not staff, faculty members and, um, uh, by a certain date, get them back. And then, you know, maybe somebody reviews them, maybe Dr. Law reviews them, make sure they're in good standing with the college and all that, good stuff, right?
Do you propose, uh, the application process as part of that?
I mean, as, eh, 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 as long as there's a deadline.
However, they...
Yeah, as long as there's a deadline for, for them, yeah.
I would say, so if, I, I would, I would want...
Fair, Dr. Mercadante?
I would ask for, what is the Friday, so if this Friday and then the sixteenth is next week? I would ask, I would, the only thing I would add to that is the deadline be, so sixteen plus seven is twenty-three by the twenty-third, um, or before.
But they would have to have, but he would have his own application process and then he would submit the applications. Yeah.
The application, he's gonna, he's gonna submit to us by December twenty-three.
The two names.
The two names.
Okay.
All right, and I agree. I, I think if we end up handpicking everyone, Devron, you're right.
It's not gonna be fair, man.
Yeah.
So, um, we've now given you more work, Dr. Mercadante, just, you know? Can always count, always count on us. So I need a motion as to the, as to the three faculty members. I would like a motion, um, that, and I will say it, that we will, um, that our faculty members shall include the president of the FGO and two faculty members in good standing with the college to be selected by the FGO and provided to, um, the Board of Trustees by December twenty-three.
That'd be my motion. I have a question, though. Question is, when we say faculty, does that include the deans, Dr. Mercadante? Does that include deans?
No.
It doesn't include administration?
No, we, we've got an administrative rep.
Person that is in the classroom, in a department, teaching. Okay. I just wanted to verify that, that's all. I just wanted to make sure.
So, um, having Devron's brilliantly stated motion and second on the table, or having a motion, do I, did I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
So we are up to, it sounds like ten.
So we are up to...
Three.
So here's who we've...
I'm, I'm, I'm messed up here.
I'm on the board here, but...
Nine?
Nine.
So we're up to...
Hold on, so we have four.
Nathan, Devron.
Six.
Four, seven, eight, nine. I see that we have nine.
Nine. And we were going to fourteen. We have two board members. Dr. Law, we have the Terry Brett, Ken Burke. I said, okay, you have those. Yep, and then we have, um, two board members, three faculty. That includes FGO president. Six, nine, that's what we're up to now.
All right. Going, um, moving forward to two students. Um, I would like to propose Alexis, and I believe I pronounce it Devero.
Debo.
Debo. I'll spell her name right correctly. Alexis spoke with, um, she's currently an intern. Um, she came and spoke, she's on our Model United Nations team that was so successful. She came and spoke to my daughter, um, my daughter's school. Um, I, you know, she's someone who took her time and truly cares about the college. And I think she's the kind of student that I, I would want to be part of this process.
So move.
How, how were the students chosen last time? I know we keep asking this question.
Everything was the, an application process last time, as I understand it. Or as what I'm hearing is that everybody was applied. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is she in North County?
I don't believe so.
Where she, where she, what's her base campus?
She's in Mid County.
She's in Mid County?
Clearwater.
Clearwater's her campus? So that would be, yeah, that's north, north of Omati. So south, right there, south is, south of Omati. North, that's right, right?
Isn't that right, walking south?
Yeah.
So, does anyone have any suggestions? I, I, I'm embarrassed to tell you, I don't know that many students, so I...
I would, I would propose, that's fine, that we have her and then Dr. Law picks another student. And if we can, maybe have a Hispanic or, because we don't have any Hispanic folks on here or the African-American descent, and that would make it, uh, fair.
Before I jump over there, do you have any suggestions of anyone that you know off the top of your head?
No, not, uh, not specifically. I was just gonna suggest that, you know, perhaps we go to student leadership of some sort. Dr. Law, you'd be better, yeah. A representative from a, a leadership role.
I agree, totally.
Right.
Okay, so the motion I believe I hear is that our two students will consist of Alexis and a student selected by Dr. Law in a leadership role.
Yes.
Okay. Um, having that motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, it passed.
Okay, so that's two students, three faculty. That's eleven. Two board members, okay. Right, Dr. Law, eleven?
Six, nine, eleven.
All right, um...
So what are the final two? What are those?
It's a...
One career service employee and one administrative professional.
So college administrator and, um, they described it as college support staff.
What was the...
I have in my list of, my list of folks, um...
You had Tara Newsome and somebody, but she would be faculty, right?
I, I, my lines blur sometimes, so I...
I'm asking, I don't know.
Um, I would, although, I, I realize that she probably needs more work on her plate like she needs a hole in the head, but I think I have a great deal of respect for Jeanette and so...
Jeanette.
Hunt.
Oh, yeah. I, I would agree with that, yeah. Yeah, that's pretty good.
She here? Excellent, she can mad at me later.
That, that would be the, is that the AMP person? Okay.
That would be the college admin.
Okay, that's fine. As long as Mrs. Stonecifer's okay with it.
I'm, I'm very okay with it.
Okay.
Okay, so having a motion...
I make a motion that we accept Jeanette Hunt as the AMP person.
Second.
Having a motion and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye. So move, so fast.
We're selecting one more person.
So we need, we have a college support staff.
Support staff. This is cool, Dr. Law is actually serving as the person for the collaborative lab, but he's not drawing the pictures, you know? I don't know. Eh, eh, yet again, I think we should look to the leadership of that organization and, and, and let them decide that. We selected Jeanette because she comes before us a lot and we trust her judgment and she works at a high level in the college. And maybe we should let the career staff, the gentleman who is the...
No, no, it's, uh, uh, Janine.
Oh, yes, right, Janine. So maybe let them s- select their individual.
Is there, so here would be my question, is there an organization of college support staff?
Yes.
That, that, so there is?
Yeah.
So, what I'm hearing is you're making a motion to allow...
That particular CSEC.
CSEC to...
To let them select their person.
By twelve twenty-three.
Or we select Janine?
She's administrative and this one would be career.
Janine.
Two different.
Janine.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, let them decide. I mean, that's, that's only fair.
Okay. So... So the, so I, the motion that I hear on the table is, is that the organization, the college support staff organization is to select a member and submit it to us by twelve twenty-three.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes, so two. What are the, what are the, um, what are the, the letters?
CSEC, C-S-E-C.
C-S-E-C. To select twelve twenty-three, okay. And with that said...
Mr. Matt, Madam Chair, one question. Does Mr. Brett serve as a voting chair or a non-voting chair?
I never thought of him as anything other than a, a voting chair.
Okay, I just asked.
With that said...
I was trying to get back to thirteen.
You're killing me. You're killing me, Smalls, you're killing me.
Thirteen is where you are, and he's in at four.
Yeah, so we're at thirteen.
You're at thirteen.
That's it.
I'm looking to Deborah. Deborah, can you make sure we counted correctly up here?
We've got thirteen.
You have thirteen, and the reason is, is that, um, we double dipped with Mr. McLeod as a foundation chair.
Foundation chair board.
Yep. So we're down to thirteen.
So are we, are we selecting somebody else from the foundation or are we using him for that?
I think in light of your concern about the size, I think that we have a member, we have a representative of the foundation on there. I think that we may have gotten ourselves a bogo. And, but I'm, I'm not digging my heels in either way, so. So with that said, I believe we have established our search committee. Next is, did that?
We have to vote on that, Madam Chair.
We voted individually as we went.
You don't need a...
Composition of search and screen committee. Well, I guess we can, you're, you're, we can make a motion for everything.
I make a motion that we accept the, um, four community folks, the two board members, the three faculty, FGO, um, the two students, one AMP and one career staff that have been discussed individually here today. um, the two students, one AMP, and one career staff that have been discussed, uh, individually here today as our, um, our selection or search screening committee.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We talked about the chair, um, where you jumped from A to E.
Sorry.
But I believe that we have already, um, one of our very first motions was to place Terry Brett in a position as Chair.
Yeah.
Do I, why don't we get him, but just a formal motion since this is...
So move that we accept Terrence Brett as the Chair of the, uh, twenty sixteen, seventeen Search Committee, the President of St. Petersburg College.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very last item is, um, very last item is our next, actually, it's not, it's the second to last item. Um, I am proposing Jan twenty-four, nine to eleven. Can everybody check their calendars?
January twenty-four, why so late?
Well, I think we can...
Can we do a month from today?
We, we, I think Jan, was January twenty-fourth already discussed with, um, Mr. Foster?
I believe so.
So that's why we...
Do I have that? I don't know. I may, I don't know. I don't wanna lie to you.
I'm gonna go with probably yes. That's where we got it. We didn't pull it out of the air, I promise.
That's, that's the week after the...
Bartlet the King.
I have, like...
January twenty-fourth.
I'm good on that date.
Okay.
I don't have it. And the twenty-four, I...
I'm fine with twenty-four.
It's okay, you guys can go ahead. I may not be able to make that.
Okay, so as it stands right now, um, do I have a motion to set the meeting for Jan twenty-four, nine to eleven?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Having a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Deborah, is your silence inaction?
Aye, 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 sorry, sorry. I'm trying to figure, you know, that is the same week of the inauguration of the President, so it's gonna be a lot of movement.
We can, we can, I don't think any of us are sentenced, though. I think we can all...
Okay. All right.
Shuffle. And my only other thing that I, um, wanted to get this board's feedback on, and I did not, it did not make it to the agenda, but I will add it as the floorly's question. Um, we previously had two meetings, um, two, one internal, one external, to, for concepts and for what we wanted, what the community wanted and what the St. Peter's College family wanted, and a president. I initially was going to come and propose to you all that, that we, we now knew what we wanted, because we, we've had, we had, we've had what we wanted. And I was, uh, quickly reminded that, I'm sitting here talking about open and transparent and involving everyone, and then the first thing I did was keep trying to cancel two meetings. The only thing that I would, would ask is, in light of the time crunch that we're under, um, I, I believe we are in vastly different circumstances today than we were back then. I would ask that we do one very well-publicized meeting in a central location where folks can come.
I'd say we do two.
My concern is, is, is time. At the end of the day, my concern is time. And in that staff time, that's, I mean, at the end of the day, these things don't just happen.
I don't like to disagree, I don't like to disagree with you, Madam Chair, but this one's where we can't, we can't, we're not gonna be able to get around the, the, the two meetings, and here's why. Here's why. In good conscience, I couldn't allow you to do that and not tell you that there are gonna be folks that are gonna be involved in this process that may or may not have transportation, right? And so, in light of that, we need to do something that is in close proximity for the folks that are north of here, and then the folks that are south of here. And that would allow everybody to, allow them enough time to get transportation. I have gotten no less than seventy-five calls from pastors, people from churches, that wanna know how we're gonna replace Dr. Law, and that, and it, none of them said anything negative. All they're saying is that he's done a great job, and we wanna have some input in that process. And to be fair to those folks, the people that we serve as a board, I just wanna make sure that everybody, you know, the little old lady who doesn't have a way to get there has not ample enough time and not have to drive to the center of the county or get a ride to the center of the county to do that.
I think that's a great perspective.
And I just wanna, yeah, I just wanna be, be fair, because we touch more than the people that go here. Remember, you know, some of these grandparents have been parents to their grandchildren, are helping them through college, involved in the process, because they, they may or may not, they, you know, we need to let them have their input as well, and that's north and south.
Okay. Would you, um, I don't know how big those meetings were in the past. Would we have enough room to host that at our Midtown Campus?
If I remember correctly, Dick was on it before, and there was, this one, this room was packed. Uh, we had one here, and I don't remember where the other one was, but this room was packed, so...
Is there a set structure for the, those meetings, uh, already established, or is that something we come up with?
I think Amelia...
Dr. Hockaday was the person who...
That's right.
Decided that we would have that meeting. There was one, it was in the boardroom.
That's right.
And it was packed. Like, uh, the chairman said, their circumstances are certainly different now than they were in two thousand nine, and I'm not sure that, you know, just from what I know, that he would wanna do that again, but that was his initiative. It was Dr. Hockaday's initiative.
He has actually proposed it in his proposal. He had proposed two, which is why, um, my instinct...
And I think we caught some criticism over having one, uh, last time.
We had two last time.
No, we didn't.
We had one. We had one last time.
I thought our notes reflected that we had two.
I got grilled for it.
Okay. With that said, I don't, that, that doesn't need a motion. That just, everybody answered...
We can do it at Green Beach, bro.
Plenty of room. I'm in, I'm in agreement, Deborah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna get, I, the last time I took a little heat over that, and, and I, it was fairly so. I should have.
That said, do I have, um, anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns before we adjourn?
Just, uh, clarification for me on, on, uh, the next steps. Uh, other than the December twenty-third deadline for the last remaining screening committee participants, Mr. Hockaday will be contacted, and the process begins with his initiative and his input, um, for scheduling those, those hearings as well.
I will reach out to Dr. Hockaday. I will reach out to you, and I'm sure we're gonna need a contract. In fact, I know, I'm...
Yeah.
But, so, I'll reach out to him, then he'll work directly with our liaison team to get a contract in place. I'll reach out to Terry Brett, and then from there, I'm gonna place Terry Brett in touch with Dr. Hockaday. And then what I will ask Mr. Brett for is, um, probably, um, maybe a two-to-three-week update, email update that I can share with everyone, um, just that everybody feels like they're in the loop. Well, you'll be, you will be the loop, so.
Perfect.
Anything else? With that said, do I need a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move that we adjourn, then.
Is that done?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great job, Madam Chair. You do not like hitting that thing, do you?
Pound that gap, huh?
Necessary. So, um, my office staff just called and told me, like, thanks, hold on.